Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9th Planning Board meeting. I'd like to please start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
For everyone's information, the emergency exits are to your left and right. Restrooms are out the door and to the left. Please be sure that you've signed in to the attendance sheet in the back of the room on the table, even if you're a developer doing a presentation on an application. There are business cards back there on the table should you need to contact the Planning Department. Also, on the back table are a copy of this evening's resolutions that are proposed. And just remind everyone to please turn off your cellphones or silence them. And if you do have conversations you need amongst yourselves, please take them to the hall and close the doors so that it won't interrupt the business of other folks appearing before the Planning Board. Our agenda this evening includes two items that have been removed until the next meeting, number two, the Valvoline application, and number four, the Crown Castle Verizon. Both have been removed in lieu of -- to the next meeting in December or later. We have two meeting minutes to approve, and I'll start with actually both of them from the 12th and the 25th of October. Does anyone have any comments on either for Lisa? Al?
No.
You're all set. So I'll hear a motion for approval of both meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moves.
Second.
Al, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero. We have received several items of correspondence this evening regarding 1086 Strong Road. One is from Morris Steed, another from Ed Morrell and Sheila Chalifo, which should be in your packets. So for Board and Committee meetings, Kim is out ill. Lisa, do you have a report?
Your next Planning Board meeting is Tuesday, December 13th. Right now, we have the Valvoline for County Rule 42 that will be on, and also the Crown Castle from tonight will be on at December 13th. The only other is your final application for South Gate Hills Phase 3. This is their third step in their three-step process for a major subdivision and any carryovers.
Any questions for Lisa from the Board? Okay. We do have Town Board here this evening. Do you have any comments or would you like to make a report? Yeah, all set? Okay, great. So, public hearing is still open for 1086 Strong Road. We do not intend to take any action this evening on it, but there have been some updates that Doug Eldred, representing the developer, have to bring forward, and I'm sure Wes may have some comments on those as well. If you do wish to address the Board, please keep your minute -- your comments to three minutes, and we will ask you to conclude your minutes should extend to five minutes. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. As you said, I'm Doug Eldred from Douglas Eldred Site Engineering, representing ASICS Properties. We've been before the Board here on three previous occasions. Maybe what I'll do is I'll just recap everything we've done briefly in response to trying to spread this out and make it a little bit more like other lots in the neighborhood. We had four lots. The first three lots have been -- there were four lots in the first three before. We took one out and put it over here. These are now 200-foot wide lots. They were 150. We now have 225-foot wide lots generally over here. We've moved the houses back where we could to get more separation from the road. We've supplied berming and tree plantings along the frontages to kind of soften the environment and also to, in a way, even hide the development of the property. And I'll get into that a little bit more. I had a meeting the other day, Monday, with Sheila Chalifo and some others, and at that meeting, I told her I would do some cross-sections so that she could see exactly, you know, how it would work out along Taylor Road. So if -- Lisa, if you could bring those up.
We're getting a little ringing on your microphone, so she's adjusting it. Not your issue, but...
Most people think I just squeal anyway, so...
We'll let you know if you start squealing, Doug.
So, yeah, if you can bring up the cross-sections. It's the other one. So, it's kind of hard to see, but I took basically across from every existing house and did a cross-section. See those black lines there? This is starting with AA. This is lot one here, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, I handed those out, or Lisa handed them out to the Board as well in 11-by-17 size. So, starting with AA, which is actually over here on the right side at the existing house. You could just switch to the next sheet, please. So, you know, again, it's a little bit cheaper, because I can't see it. AA is this one, I believe.
Upper left, right?
Yep. So, in each case, you'll find that -- I'm sorry, can you go back? Go back one again. Okay. So, what I wanted to point out here was basically from this lot, the house, the existing house is just off the sheet here, and actually, including that lot, all the way down to this lot, which would be lot three, a combination of berming and plantings would make it such that when you're driving along the road, you're really not going to be able to see back in there because of, you know, just trying to somewhat replicate what's going on the other side. Of course, we can't plant 30, 40, 50-year-old trees, so -- and it's all open, so there's only so much we can do. But the idea there was, in response to some concerns about maybe not looking visually like it does across the street, is to provide some screening and a combination of the berms and the tree plantings. So, really, you just -- lots one and two, not much I can do there because it's a rising topography. We'll plant some trees along the front side on lots one and two. Of course, there'll be smaller trees. It will take a while for them to fill in, but other than those two lots, really, then there's an existing trees in this area that does a nice screening job. And then throughout this area, it's either -- it's mainly berms and trees that go along there, the rest the way up to lot one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, the intent there is to provide that sort of continuous screening as you're sitting in Taylor Road and looking out. Now, of course, when you get to a driveway or you get to, for example, between a tree and a berm, something like that, there'll be peek-a-boo areas where you can look through there. But in general, I think it'll do a nice job of providing some nice greenery, landscaping, and a screening of the houses throughout there. So, go ahead and go to the next sheet now. And I'm sorry I can't see this very well, but on each of these, we show -- on the left will be the proposed, a proposed house, and I've shown them all at two-story, kind of a worst-case scenario. And then on the right-hand side would be the existing house. This is across from lot seven, and these trees would be existing trees. So, we showed where there was a sort of a fairly large clapping of trees. We showed the trees that exist. So, in essence, there really isn't any visual connectivity between the two of them there. And I also provided the distance between the houses and the trees.
Just so everyone knows, these are five-to-one scale exaggerations, horizontal, vertical.
Oh, oh, yeah. Thank you very much. So, the scale in the horizontal direction is one inch equals 50 feet, and in the vertical direction, it's one inch equals 10 feet. So, this looks much steeper than the actuality out there. But the problem is, if you do it the same scale, one inch equals 50, both horizontally and vertically, you can't see the definition of what we're trying to do. So, that's why, and it's sort of common engineering practice, that we expand the vertical scale just as a mechanism to be able to see. So, between the existing trees that exist, you know, you see our little guy. I showed all of the trees that we'd be planting at sort of the dormant, or the planting height of 10 feet or so. So, the little guys on the left side, which is our side of the road, and then we showed them at 30 feet. Now, I have to explain that these topography and the houses and everything was taken off of readily available information, so this thing isn't precise. You know, we didn't go out there and survey each one, et cetera, but I think it does a nice job of showing the general pattern of what you'll be able to see from the house towards the new houses. The next one, section BB, which is across from lot five, here's lot five, and here's the existing house. Now, it's hard to see, but the road is here. Then the berm comes up, so again, if you're sitting in the road, you won't be able to see back through there because you look into the berm. And this is the view from there to there. The distance between the houses is 455 feet approximately from this house to the proposed house. You can see, in this case, the proposed house is below the road more than the existing house, which is also below the road, but not as much. So, again, I don't think there's going to be much in the way of visibility if you're looking out in that direction. Next section CC is at lot four, which is down here. Now, there is, I'm not showing any vegetation in front of this house. There is some really nice landscaping and so on, but I thought it would be disingenuous to kind of show that stuff at some sort of mature height. So, I'm not showing any vegetation here. Again, there's a berm here. The houses or the cars will be below the berm, so they won't be able to see back. And you can see that there would be potentially some visibility, especially as these trees are not mature from there to there. But again, it's, like I already said, it's 440 feet apart. Next one is across from...
So, Doug, just for scale, the berms are about five feet high?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm seeing?
Exactly, exactly.
Those grid lines, the horizontal grid lines are five feet apart?
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. So, the next one, now, we get to the -- in this, we're getting to the area where there's not much I can do as far as visually screening because the topography, the road is here, the topography is above the road for the houses. So, you're getting to a location where you can't do too much. Now, there is a fair amount of existing vegetation in front of this, so I don't think you'll see that. Again, I don't have a berm in here because I don't have the room. So, it's just showing one of our little planted trees in the area there, and that's in front of lot five. And then the last one is in front, I'm sorry, lot two, rather. Last one in front of lot one. This house has a fair amount below the road. The road is up here. The rising topography does not allow me to do much in the way of berming, but as you can see, you'd have to kind of look upwards if you wanted to see the house.
And the house is about 275 feet from the front of this house to the front of that house.
The previous one was about... About the same, 280, something like that. So, you know, again, just kind of recapping, maybe just going back to the site plan for a second. Thanks. So, as far as from the road, from a point here up to a point, there's existing vegetation here, up to about there, there's not really much you're going to see back in there, other than when you're looking down the driveways and maybe perhaps between some of the existing trees that exist. Over here, there'll be young trees planted. Not much I can do about it. The road rises up. I don't really have room to put a berm in. If I did, it wouldn't do any good because the houses are so much farther above the road. But, you know, in general, so my point here is, even though there's eight lots along here, you'll see two, maybe parts of three of them, and that was my intent, was to try and reduce that visualization because there's concern that we're not in conformance with what's across the road. Now, what's across the road, you've got to remember, these had both water, I'm sorry, wells and septic systems, so their widths are typically wider, mainly because they have to have separation distances between the septic systems and the wells and things like that. So, when that was laid out, all they had to be taken into account. These houses are generally below the road over here until you get up into this area, and so it's looking uphill, if you will. Over here, again, there's not a whole lot I can do. Putting some landscape berms in these areas, right in here, right in here, and over here, and doing some street trees to kind of soften the view. I can't do anything about the home that's up here. I mean, they're going to be looking down over the whole thing. I can't change the topography, and I can't put 100-foot-high trees in, so... But the intent of all this exercise was to, number one, I think with the changes we made, widening these three lots, adding one over here, moving the houses back, I think you can see from the location of the houses, the side of the road, they're either in a similar location, and of course, these three are much farther back. These are in a similar location. They're back from the road, and so on. So, I think that, you know, we've done what we could, aside from reducing the number of lots, which I know that what's the neighbors want, but that just isn't in the cards. So, I think, you know, along those lines, I know the neighbors got a plan. They're going to show an eight-lot, I think, subdivision up in here. It just, the developers decided it's not economically feasible to do that. The zoning district, we completely conform with it. The one lot per three acres, a .33 acres per lot, we completely conform with that. And that does establish a right, if you will. Just like if an existing house or lot over here was six acres, they could, you know, theoretically add another lot back in there. So, it creates a level playing field, if you will. When you go with the code, you stick to the code, and everything is in conformity, then you're making it level for everybody. You know, these people or my developer here is competing against similar economic situations with other people because they've all stuck to the same rules. Beyond that, I did receive comments from the Conservation Board and Fire Marshal, et cetera. It sounds like to me, after reading the Conservation Board comments, that they are pretty much in agreement with the conservation easements as laid out. If you'll remember, you know, this area in the back is 100%. You can't touch that, so to speak. And by the way, I did add along this property line as well because there's existing trees here between this house and the neighboring house. So, I added that in as you can't touch that type of area. The other ones are intended to protect the planted trees, for one thing, so that the conservation easement could be devised such that, you know, because we're doing this screening and berming and all that type of stuff, you can't go in there and you can't cut the trees down, you can't take the berm away. And if a tree dies, maybe it needs to get replaced, you know, something along those lines. So, again, we're trying to conform with the intent to be able to maintain what we're providing from day one throughout the history. The Conservation Board, the only comment I sit ahead is, you know, how are you going to mark the areas? I'm not sure. What was your typical way to mark them? Is it just iron pins or flagging or...
For the conservation easement?
Yeah, for the conservation easement.
Specific detail on the...
There's detail, okay. So, we would mark them, the conventional method. Comments from Mark Years? I can, you know, by the way, I can go through any of these if you want. I'm just saying, there's no problem conforming with them. If you want me to talk about any specific one, I will be happy to see that, do that. From Kenneth Maynard, who is the stormwater guy, right? Now, the one question he has is, who's going to be responsible? If you remember, there's an area right in here that's in a drainage easement. It's a natural infiltration area that takes all this slurry, and it just drains in there, sucks into the ground. We've done testing by DEC methods. The soils are excellent, and it's the number-one most desirable green infrastructure practice that you're providing. So, I'm not sure what other type of maintenance they would be able to mow that area, you know, their individual property owners. They obviously couldn't change the contours or do any filling or grading or anything along those lines. Yeah, he noted there's a culvert that got on here, left on here from the old plan that didn't get taken off, unfortunately. So, we'll just be taking that off. And then finally, Adam Reisack from the Building Department, and Al, I guess. He's noting that we need some streetlights, or I'm sorry, and Lewis Streetlights would do post lights for individual lots. He's suggesting maybe downspout, I'm showing downspouts, which would require a waiver in lieu of infiltration drywells, so the Board could consider that. My thought along those lines is, you know, quite frankly, we do these calculations, and this ground is so previous, you just don't get much runoff. So, the Board would have to make a decision on that. Note here about 10-foot driveway separation. We'll have to correct that. And then about structural construction for the long driveways, I'm good with that. And then we have Babet, who obviously is very concerned about maintaining the house. I saw her earlier tonight and said that they are, they've been in there, they've been assessing what they need to do. They had the asbestos guys in there, and they want to get going, but unfortunately, they're not going to do anything until it switches hands from ASICS over to Chris Iverson. So, if you can get us the approval right away, we'll get right on that. But the intention is to save the house, of course. And then I have from Corning Fire Service. Again, there's some comments here. I don't really have any issues with any of those. So, beyond that, I would be glad to answer any questions or if you want me to go over anything in more detail with regard to the -- I didn't get any from anything yet from the Town Engineer, other than the initial batch that came in with the first submittal that I addressed with this submittal. So, of course, I'll work with them to iron out any things that we need to iron out.
Okay. I know that we had discussed the accident history down at Taylor and Strong.
Oh, yes.
And I don't know if you've picked up anything yet, but Wes may have some comments.
I haven't, but I can tell you one thing. When I was out there the other day, I looked in this direction, and there could be some improvement by peeling this hillside back here, right in this area.
Side distance?
You know, somewhat. I'm a little concerned that we're going to get into the roots of the trees that are up on the top, but there could be some improvement in side distance by peeling that back, which would give you more visual length back here. Beyond that, I don't really know, this is my issue to deal with as much as the Towns.
Okay.
I did, I did, I meant to mention it to Wes, but when we did the very original submission, we did count cars at this intersection. So, they're back in that original engineer's report. You've got a chance to look at that, Wes.
Thanks, Doug.
Sure.
Wes, did you want to?
Yeah, I can chime in as far as the Town Engineer review is proceeding. With that intersection, Taylor and Strong Road, we did submit a FOIL request to Ontario County to retrieve accident data for the past 10 years at that intersection. We haven't received anything as of yet. I would anticipate that would be coming in the next week or so. So, that might shed some light on what we talked about at the last meeting with regard to, you know, traffic control, a three-way stop at that intersection, and we can revisit that at the next meeting. So, we do have, I've got someone who has taken a look at the water main installation along Strong Road, and we will formalize these comments and update them for you. We just got the plans, I think it was last week.
Sure.
And I think we might be looking for a potential increase in depth on the water main, just to avoid any potential conflicts in the future with any cross-culverts that might be required by the Town Highway Superintendent for drainage purposes.
Okay.
We'll formalize that comment. And also, we've done a little bit of coordination with New York State Department of Health on taking a look at the septic systems, and we'll have some additional comments there as well as grading.
Yeah, the one thing I talked to him about, it's kind of common in Monroe County that you put the leach lines 10 feet apart, and the area between the leach lines is your expansion area. And I checked with, I don't know, my mind's going blank here, but Geneva Office, and they said they would honor the same situation. So, we're not showing additional expansion area.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, we've got a little bit more work to do, as well as we've been filling in the Environmental Assessment Form Part II, draft of that, so that at the next meeting, we can bring some substance back in terms of the Planning Board doing an environmental review on the project. My understanding is also that the Town Staff has directed the applicant to get in front of the Town Board at the next meeting for, just from informal, with a request to extend the Water District, right, to allow them to...
Yeah, we're on the agenda next Monday.
Yeah. So, we're, tonight, for tonight's meeting, we did prepare a draft resolution which simply would get the lead agency, the environmental review lead agency coordination process going with the Planning Board requesting lead agency status and the other involved agencies, including the Victor Town Board, New York State Department of Health, and I think there was one other.
So, you're treating this like a Type 1 action?
Yeah, so Realty Subdivisions. Actually, the Realty Subdivision law requires that any subdivision that's a Realty subdivision be a Type 1 action.
Due to me.
Yeah.
This is a state...
45 years later.
I can point you to that reference.
I, Wes, I believe you.
Okay.
So, that'll be going ahead right away because we can't make any decisions.
Yes, correct. So, yeah, there's that 30-day timeframe within which a determination can't be made in that 30 days unless we have the concurrence of all the other involved agencies.
There's a possibility of getting that out, so...
Yes.
Be in it, okay. Position to act at the next meeting?
Yeah, possibly. The idea is to have a Part II straw document drafted with some narrative to go along with that, you know, that captures a lot of the concerns that the residents have talked about in terms of stream, water quality, you know, the amount of land disturbance that's occurring, agricultural resources, traffic is another one. So, and we can't fill in the traffic component until maybe we get that FOIL response, so...
Okay.
So, we can start the process with, for the environmental review, correct, Wes? And by doing the, you know, lead agency determination letter, and that'll be 30 days out before we get any, you know, we get most 30 days to respond, right, from other agencies, and then it'll be more than 30 days to the next meeting, so we could then review the...
If you can get it out right away, so...
Yeah, I think the intent is to get the lead agency coordination notice out immediately following this meeting and actually provide them an opportunity and the resources and method to respond so that the 30 days, you don't have to necessarily let those 30 days lapse.
Okay. Just looking at Town Board, Water District, and other agencies' opportunities to review before the next meeting, so...
Yes, so, you know, of course, we're most anxious to move forward, so...
Understood.
I... Appreciate it.
Just to follow the procedures and all that, so.
Gotcha. No, like I said, it's a new one to me.
Okay.
I was thinking this was unlisted, and they didn't, you didn't need to do that, so. All right, I appreciate it. If there's any other questions?
I'll open it up to, Wes, did you have anything else before?
Not right now, unless the planning board members themselves might have any questions for me at this moment.
Al, anything?
No, not at this time.
Joe, okay. We did get three items of correspondence from the public. I guess I would encourage, since we just got them to, for the board to review between now and the next meeting. Anybody have an objection to that?
No.
Okay. The public hearing is still open.
I guess that's my question. Are we in a position to close it now?
No, I, I won't close it probably until at least the next meeting, simply because we're getting correspondence, and we do have to go through the secret process, so.
Okay.
I know, I see Babette's here, and?
She's, I can feel her breathing on the back of my neck.
I want to give her an opportunity, because she wasn't able to speak the last time. If you have any comments, Babette?
My comments are, as a resident, they're going to be really surprising up here, because I said I was going to keep out of this. Historian, I'm glad to hear that they're working on the house, and that we are going, and as I said in my comment, I hope that the, the planning board will use that as part of the, of the process, that, that house be saved. But I'm not, as a resident, stepping aside as my historian, I'm not directly involved really with this development. It's, it's, I'm not going to be impacted by it, although I'm a resident of Strong Road. I'm a resident of the southwest quadrant. And years ago, the residents of the southwest quadrant decided that they didn't want public water. And I'm assuming that the reason that they did say that was because they wanted the rural character of that quadrant to stay rural. We also had a comprehensive plan that the residents gave their input to. And one of the four goals was that, to ensure that all elements of Victor's community, character, that were valued by the residents was preserved. A common theme was protection and enhancement of the open space and the rural character. As part of the vision, the comprehensive plan, which was put together again by residents, is to have town policies which would protect and promote a small-town atmosphere, and enhance our extensive natural resources and their supporting landscapes. And I'm hoping that this board will also be aware of, as part of my job as a historian, I'm sorry, I'm kind of meshing both of these together, but I've gone to the, to the Conservation Board, because we do have geologic features in our community, and we want to keep those as well, as much as possible, like caimes and drumlins that are in the southwest quadrant. Development's going to happen, we know that. But can it be done in a way that there's a blend of the natural resources and the built environment? Does this plan have to be as many homes as they have there? In thinking with the consistency of the land, the natural resources that we have on that property? Also, the comprehensive plan set in its goals under community development to ensure the elements of community character valued by the residents was preserved, and to maintain open space, rural character, and low-density in outlying areas. And I, and I think that this part of the town was deemed to be one of those outlying areas. And I just hope that you will consider, again, the comprehensive plan, which says that this quadrant should be an area which promotes development that has a low impact on the environment, and maintains the character of the community.
Thanks, Babette. Wes, correct me if I'm wrong, but this section was deemed one of the areas that there was an increase recommended in density in the comprehensive plan? Or is that adjacent to this section?
I don't believe this particular parcel, I don't believe that this parcel was included
Okay.
as a conceptual area where the town wanted to increase density.
Yeah, I don't know if you have that map.
I have that map in my resources here somewhere.
Okay.
If we want to look at that tonight, I can poke around for it.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Joe, I think, I think you're right, Wes. I think that it was more north, Strong Road.
It was the section that we just approved, some dense, actually, still a lower density, the three acres, but the Anderson property started out as?
Yes, yes, right.
Because I know that was near this, and I didn't know if it extended all the way over or not. I wasn't recalling which areas, because there were some hatched areas, you know, in the comprehensive plan and all that. So I just wanted to verify that it wasn't part of that. So they are sticking to the three acres per parcel with this development.
Do you have to, does a, does a development have to be three acres per parcel, or can it be?
It can be no more dense than three acres per parcel.
Yes, okay, so it could be.
It could be 3.1, or it could be five, if the developer chooses to. But if it doesn't fit the site, or if it, I don't know, I can't even put that as a qualifier. If it, it makes sense to go smaller, bigger, I guess you call it.
Bigger, wow, okay.
Fewer.
Fewer, right, okay. Just as a clarification.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, would you like to make a comment? I, I was trying to hold off doing this until the next meeting, but did you have?
You can get rid of me.
Can't do that. All right.
I have a follow-up to Babette.
Okay.
Okay. But if I may just say one thing to?
Name, address, all that.
The developer, if you may. Oh, Admiral, Harloff Road, Corner Taylor. Your revised plans, Doug, for house placement, driveway placement, redistribution of parcels, and hiding the houses, doesn't address the most important issue, density. Doesn't address it. Ten new houses is far too many, and does not fit into this established neighborhood. There are only five lots on Taylor across from the Otte property. And only one on Strong, across from the Otte property, not 10. Last meeting, I made a comment to the board about a mission statement. I asked if you had one. Let me give you a definition of a mission statement. A formal summary of aims and values of an organization. It's not a statement of purposes nor authority, as in the 11 purposes of the board, this board. I'm arguing for a statement of values, a statement that considers the constituents, the residents, of Victor. The 11 purposes given to this board neglect your responsibility to the taxpayer, the residents like us here tonight, that are forced to accept your decisions. But don't forget, you are one of us. I was going to give you a long analogy, but I'm not going to bother. There's no need for an analogy. You probably remember, well, I forgot that. What I'm asking you tonight is to care about your constituents, the residents of Victor, even if your 11 purposes fail this aim, and they certainly do. I've read all 11. Oopsie daisy. I would maintain that you are not here foremost to serve the vague concept of the town of Victor, or the town governing leaders, but rather the residents of Victor, because town politicians come and go, planning board members also come and go. But we, the residents, we're here for the long haul. It is not that you have no guidance as to how to make decisions for your constituents. The residents of Victor, you have a comprehensive plan, as Babette has pointed out, and I have two other times, developed by former board members and Victor residents, to guide you in your actions. We are here tonight want to preserve, we, the residents, want to preserve this beautiful town and our established neighborhoods. Finally, I would ask each of you board members individually, if you lived on Taylor Road or Strong Road, wouldn't you be sitting alongside of us, arguing against this development? I believe you would. A development that mirrors the current residences along Taylor and Strong Road would only have six new houses, not 10. I thank you very much, and I do appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. And you're welcome. I guess with that, I will, let's move on to the next piece of agenda. Doesn't, no, we have hard copies. And I, at the, at the beginning, I said we got three pieces of correspondence, and I just asked the board to, to review them.
Also here, in my residential capacity, I didn't intend to speak. I'm a little, you know, this is moving on, I understand. But I do think, and it's a couple of points, I guess. First point is, as far as the number of houses, there is no question that they could have gone into the code enforcement office in the beginning and said, how many can I fit on here? Nobody's disputing that they can't fit that many houses on there. But this is where you guys come in. And we're, we're, you know, over and over again, the unique character of this land makes it so, they've got to smush all the houses up there. When the comprehensive plan talked about the size of the lots, they were, I, I think they were thinking that these could be spread out on the lots, but they can't because of the way this is. So they're all, you know, smushed in the edge. So, I mean, I, you know, just, it's, if you, as a board, individually, or, you know, as a board altogether, talked to the developer and said, you know, this does bother us. This bothers us because of the comp plan. This bothers us because economics are the only reason that they're putting this many houses on there. He'd talk to us, because then we talk about, and we, we do some plan, like Mr. Baker's worked on this plan all week. It's a great plan. I want everyone in this room to see that plan. I assume by emailing it, I could get it up there. It's very similar, in fact, that, you know, it's, it's a development of that land. It's not 10 houses, 11 houses now. It's, it's a much more reasonable plan. We voted out water because we didn't want water out here. First of all, because of the development. Secondly, we don't want the water. So we're going to, we're going to oppose that, obviously, too. But I really want you individually to look at this and say, isn't this a little too much? And if it is, say that, because Mr. Eldridge, I'm very sure, will be more willing to talk to us if he knows that this is going to be, you know, you don't have to give them everything they're asking for. You know, we can force them to be reasonable, and we're not being greedy. If you look at that map, you know, and that's, that's not set in stone, but that's pretty reasonable. Even add another lot on there, and it's nowhere near this. And not just that, but the way he's, Mr. Baker did such a good job of laying these lots out, so they look like our neighborhood. These roll lots don't look like our neighborhood. Anyway.
Thank you. This is a, the public hearing is still open. I was looking to move on, because we're not really taking any action this evening, other than declaring ourselves as lead agency. We do have other opportunities at future meetings for public comment. So unless it's the pleasure of the board to continue receiving comments this evening.
Individual.
Yeah.
When's the next meeting for this?
It's, the next planning board meeting is mid-December 13th, I believe.
Be on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, I, I guess I would offer, if there's a resident with information or some, a new point of view that we haven't processed probably several times already, if there's some additional information in sight, I'd be happy to hear at this point, but unnecessary repeat of some of the previous input.
Ms. Shalafou, I think, talked about the plan that was brought forward that we all have to look at. And Doug, assuming you received this, correct? I got little ones.
They were all given a hard copy for their packets. They all have them individually. I can't send out large copies for everyone.
Yeah. So if there's, if there's someone here from the public, as Al suggested, that has something different or a different perspective or new information, not a similar opinion, or, you know, restating an opinion that you'd like to present? First of all, you need to be at the microphone. Sure, come on up.
My name is Philip Nelson, and I live at 7976 Taylor Road. I've written out what I want to say, and I can do it in the three minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's believe you've addressed the board in the past, have you?
Yes, I have.
Have you? Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity. Near the conclusion of the last meeting, the developer representative, Doug, characterized everyone who objects to this proposal as anti-development, with the implication that our opinions were without merit because of that prejudice. I object to that characterization for two reasons. First, there's nothing wrong with being anti-development. Even if true, being anti-development would not lessen or invalidate the arguments being presented. Second, I am not anti-development. I'm anti-this proposed development project, because it is out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, and out of agreement with the Victor Comprehensive Master Plan. As proof of the foregoing, I suggest we consider the whole Otte property. It originally comprised 16 acres east of Strong Road and 34 west of Strong Road. Applying the developer's profiteering logic to the east acreage, it could only profitably be developed by building five houses on it. It was approved for two. I did not object at all to that development. And in fact, when one of the owners, Patrick Canzano, applied for variance to build a house behind the existing barn, the same anti-development neighbors supported the variance. You, Mr. Logan, I believe it was, even commented on how unusual it was to have so many citizens comment on a variance proposal without dissent. In conclusion, I'm against this proposed project, because it does not comply with the master plan. In fact, one of the lots does not even meet the three-acre minimum lot size. I was going to say the following, I'm going to read this, but you may, well, let me just read it. My neighbor, Morris Steed, would like to share some specific excerpts from the master plan, documenting how the project does not comply with, with your permission. I will yield the microphone to her, but it's up to you.
That's fine. Like two?
I'm not, I'm Morris Steed. I live at 1117 Strong Road. I think I'm going to go a little off from what Phil was saying that I would present. Definitely the fact of the comprehensive plan, you keep hearing about that from all of us, and how this is just not in keeping with, with the, what we had in mind when the comprehensive plan was first being worked on as a strategic plan, with over 60 citizens from various parts of the town working on it. It was, it was a great process. It was, it was a great process. And it is disturbing to see things that are not really in cohesion with all of that that was done with the comprehensive plan. The, so many questions that we have brought up, and it's really hard now to have you say, well, if you're bringing up the same thing again, we don't need to hear it. Well, the reason we're bringing it up is because we don't feel our questions have been answered. We just don't really feel that, that you're the purpose, the, you're expected, according to the town website, what you're expected to do and stay abreast of the town code, town comprehensive plan, general knowledge of town law, and C-COR. And I think that this is what is disturbing us all deeply, that we are, we are not trying to have Victor not be a thriving community. And I think many of us are feeling, it's losing that because it is losing what made Victor who it is and what it stood for. The fact that it seems that the developer can come in and override everything. And as Sheila mentioned about the water, bringing water in, it was voted down. No, nobody wanted it or needed it. We just, that was not what we were, and we presumed the vote was, was, we were given the right to vote, and it was paid attention to. And now it's like, well, I guess that doesn't hold any water. The roads, I know, it's like there was a study done, and, you know, how many cars? And you could talk to any one of the neighbors along Strong Road and Taylor Road, and they will tell you how close they have come to being in an accident. There have been cars that have gone off the road, driving carelessly, that are, there's going to be no report because they were able to get somebody to move them, and they weren't going to report this. I think some of the studies, I've worked in quality control and testing and test development years ago, and I understand what it takes to do a test that is going to cover everything as much as possible. And it doesn't seem that some of these tests that are being done are really covering where you're doing it, the test to find out whether the soil, the water will come through. And you're doing with one pipe and pouring the water in and timing it. It's like, I'm thinking, you're now going to put on a lot of impermeable surfaces that are, the water is going to change. It's even said in the building permit, you can't put a poured foundation within 75 feet of a creek. Well, what does that say? It's that this changes the water flow of the land. And it just, it seems that so much of what is being proposed in this is so counter to the land itself, which is, we've already, we know, we know we are not going to be able to to save the land as farmland and the natural resource. We know that, but there doesn't seem to be any compromise from the developer on, it's just a matter, I'm going to have the same houses. We're not going to limit, we're not going to cut back on the houses. We're just going to move the remound, and that should make you happy. And I think, I don't know, I'm finding this to be very disturbing that that continues to happen. And it's as if what we are talking about has no meaning. And I think I'm not the only one who is feeling very, very upset about this. So I would like to ask you to continue doing your hard work and try to consider the reason that we keep coming back with these things, because we don't feel that they have been well resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Joe wanted to add.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing your frustration. I understand your passion and occasional eloquence about all of this. There's a frustration on my part to a certain extent because I believe that the only time I'm really having an opportunity to express my opinion is in my vote. If I'm mistaken in that, I don't think I am. I think my vote is my expression of response to all of this. Is that correct?
In terms of approval of a, or a...
Of a resolution.
A resolution, no. I mean, you certainly have the public floor right now, as other times too, to express it and to...
So frankly, I share your thoughts about the density. I, I am a lifelong resident of Victor. My parents lived down at the other end of Strong Road, up on Parish Road. So I travel the road every day. I understand your concerns. I also am very aware of other situations where the, the planning board has voted against proposal and gone to court and lost as a result because everything the developer was doing was perfectly in compliance with the law. So I feel that internal tension between protecting your interests and protecting the town's interests and responding to the developer's prerogatives and rights in this. So there's, they're being pulled in quite a number of different directions. But the last thing I want you all to sense is that we don't want to hear from you because your frustration, again, your passion, your elegance is very apparent in this. So I just wanted to express that because I feel bad that you're not getting a good response from us, or me anyways.
And I appreciate that, Joe, and it's well-stated. And I just also wanted to say that we have been speaking with our town engineer to resolve certain elements that you all have raised, whether it's traffic or the water line and things like that. And these will be reviewed during the seeker process, which we're starting down the road to do, so.
I think that's an important point, is the formal seeker process, which we have not yet commenced, is where the board then actually deliberates on the seeker itself. So we've been seeking input, information from a variety of sources, including the town residents. And then the formal process will really be evaluated based on established criteria as part of the seeker.
Am I understanding this correctly, that because the numbers have been met of, you know, the three acres or the numbers of the houses, because of the amount of acres? So am I to understand that because that has been met, that's, that's set? And can that...
That's one element of the evaluation.
Pardon? There's one element, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to step on your comment.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, all right.
So we take that into account on behalf of the applicant, but we also take into account other elements, you know, whether it's the environment or the water line, residents, certainly all your concerns that you've brought forward. And I'm sorry if we've seen a little, I want to say non-responsive. We're listening, we're taking in information. We're not trying to say that we're not going to address them or answer them. I think that's something that we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, we're not debating or arguing the input. We're collecting input at this point, so.
Okay.
Silence does not mean concurrence.
Yeah. So, thank you all, appreciate it.
Joe.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, come on up, sure. Or you can use the microphone that's over there if you like, but... No problem, we got one that works here.
My name's Mike Guinan. When I'm in that chair, it's because I'm the liaison from the town board attending the planning board meeting. But coming up here, I want to take two stances. One is a resident, lifelong resident, like a lot of you. And it's kind of bothered me, the stance that people have taken. I spent five years on the comp plan. I've been on the board. I've lived here 67 years on a farm about Hill Road, not too far away, with the same circumstance. My father was there for 92 years prior to that, and his father before him since 18, or 1908. So I have skin in the game, and I know what Victor's all about. I have a deep passion. I'd love it if White still had a horse farm on Strong Road. I'd love it if the O'Neills still could farm it, but they can't. I love it, I used to go to Billy Reese's house and play in those fields, and I farmed there. I picked corn on that corner for Bino Gillis. I know everything that you're saying about, about the concept of Victor and the Drumlins and the land and preserving it. And what happened after the comp plan in the 90s, when we were on it, is Victor started snowballing. Everybody wanted to be here. The Reese family has a legacy that they want to get the most that they can in the best way for everybody for their land, as did Billy O'Neill, as did my parents, who I lost in the last couple of years in the COVID. And we had 119 acres, going through the same thing. And my family's farm down the road, it's Bluemont, did the same thing. And this fight comes up over and over again because people make it sound like that the people on this board and the people on town board have something that we're ignoring you. I've done this for 20 years, and I don't ignore anybody, and I don't like... These people are engineers, are solid arable people, are board members, are town board members. They're nothing, they dedicate their lives to people in town to make it equal for everybody, and the rights of the landowner as well as the people around them. So to say that they don't care, don't listen, is totally wrong. It's wrong in every way. I mean, I have, I love that territory. I used to ride horses on Anderson's Hill because Harley even was my 4-H leader. It's wrong to think that anybody here doesn't have your interests at heart. So if you think that whatever they come up with, whatever the town comes up with, if it's two houses or 200 houses, the residents of the town are their first concern. That's all I want to say. I wanted to stand up for everybody that's here because they will not make a move. They will not move water. They will not do a sewer. They will not approve soil and water. We've tried numerous times as a town board because we petitioned to change the speed limits on Strong Road. We've been turned down every time. It's not our, we don't change the speed limit, it's been turned down. I went to a meeting with Dave Condon the other day that said, the best way to control speed on roads like there and Victor-Egypt Road and all the roads that we've applied on is enforcement. If they're not going to change it, I'd love to tell you that we can. You want to slow it down if there's accidents or, I mean, Wes has sat in on meetings when they've turned us down numerous times to change speed limits in town. It's not our call, we can't do it. We can petition it, we can, and they've turned us down. And they will again on that road. Even if you have houses, no houses, or whatever, the people are going to drive fast, and they have said enforcement is the way. We approved in the budget this year additional monies to bring the county and the state in to enforce speed limits. Through COVID, our budgets were cut, and now we've got some more money. We put more money in to pay the county for more enforcement because they've said that that's the better route for us to take and more instantaneous. It takes, I don't know, Westwood, to take years to even attempt to get on the log to get a speed limit change on any road. So we're trying in every way to comply with what people want and the rights of the landowners. And whatever happens, the result of this, all I want to make clear is there isn't a single soul that I know of within the town, or on this board, or my board, or on the comp board, comp plan that I was on, that does not fight for everybody's rights, yours and the landowners. And to say that it's otherwise is just dead wrong. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. So with that, we do have several other applications. Doug, did you want to?
Very briefly.
Come on up.
You know what? What I find very interesting about this piece of land is it's an open piece of land. What if it's all wooded, like your properties were wooded, many of them on the other side? And the house can be hidden because of that fact. Now, because it's an open piece of land and you like looking at that open piece of land, you want to take the rights away from the owner. You want to, you want to take a family that spent there for 150 years and take his rights away. He has rights just as you have rights.
Doug, I think we're probably all you need to say.
Joe, I got, I've got something I just want to address, just in case there's a little piece of information going around. And I, it's about the zoning and the minimum lot size. And I just want to clarify for everybody. I think it was mentioned that there was a minimum lot size of three acres. That's incorrect. The, the minimum lot size for the R2 zoning district, when there is no public water or public sewer, is 43,560 square feet, which is one acre. So the minimum lot size here in this area for this development is one acre. When, when we hear people say three acres per unit, it's kind of a, it's kind of a misinterpretation or misstatement of the town's residential overlay zoning map, which identifies a maximum density of .33 units per acre. So I just wanted to clarify that so that it's not misunderstood that the minimum lot size is one acre and not three.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Wes. When I talk about density is three acre, you know, up to three acres per unit, you're right, it's not, it's not the lot size. So if I, and I've done it a couple of times, corrected people or at least made a comment that it's the density, not the lot size, that's exactly where I'm coming from. So, thank you, Wes, appreciate it. We do have the issue of, I have to do a resolution here for lead agency, so... Do you have something new to bring before the board, or?
I just have some questions to ask.
Okay.
I would say that any comments from the public need to be addressed to the, to the planning board, not to the developer.
So...
Okay, well, I have one then.
All right.
What?
I'm sorry, name, address, just for the record.
Bill Kaiser, 8008 Taylor Road.
Thank you.
What planning, P-L-A-N-N-I-N-G, is being done by the Victor Planning Board? Is that one of your responsibilities, to plan, taking the comprehensive plan into consideration?
We always do that. We, that, the plant, that's a planning board document, as well as a town board document, is to guide us.
So does the title of Planning Board, is that in reference to planning done by others, like Doug and other developers?
That's one of the elements of our work, is to review what's, you know, applications that come before the board that are, that they're required to bring before the planning board, same as the zoning board looks at applications that require a zoning board review. But we have done many, taken many initiatives in the past. I have personally, and several others have too, on the board and with, along with Wes and our town engineer, regarding traffic control, you know, updates, we had a whole traffic study for the entire town that I did, worked on the board with, it was probably 10 years ago by now, looking at intersections and where routes needed to be updated, improved, widened, roads widening, sidewalks, all of that. We had a committee that did walkability. So there are, and there's a lot of elements to this, historic preservation, historic districts. The overlay districts come out of that planning process as well.
And is this done...
If I'm not mistaken though, Joe, the Planning and Building Department actually...
Is your mic on?
The Planning and Building Department actually does the bulk of that work to have a plan for us to review. And then if there are ad hoc things that we need to further plan and develop, then we would, and we would go towards that?
Planning and zoning enacts what rules, you know, the, help me out, Wes, the code, you know, building code for sure, and, and looking at the requirements of the town for applications. They process them, they direct them to the proper boards, they direct them to the town board.
I think what Mr. Kaiser, if I can interpret, are you asking if we actually develop plans for the future of the area? Is that?
Yeah.
We're part of that process.
Overall kinds of feelings, directions that you want the town to go, or particular areas?
So I might, I might offer the following. I understand your question, I think I understand your question, and you can let me know if I don't. So this, this body here, the planning board, is an administrative body that was created by the town board through the state enabling statutes. And this, this administrative body does exactly what it's supposed to do in terms of reviewing site plan applications and subdivision applications and special use permits. There are, through the state enabling statutes, planning boards do sometimes create their, create a comprehensive plan to offer to the town board as, for consideration for adoption. So this, but this, this planning board here is generally responsible for the administrative capacity of the subdivision site plans and special use permits. If you want to talk further about the purpose of this board, I would suggest we talk offline or with town staff during regular business hours.
If I, from all your comments, I, I...
If I, from all your comments, I, I deduce that it's not your primary purpose to plan in the general scheme of things.
Well, we review when necessary, the comprehensive plan to see if there's changes or updates. We involve the public, do public hearings. The town board does that along with the planning board's assistants.
Is there somewhere else in the town of Victor that does this kind of long range conceptual planning of, well, this is an area that needs to be preserved?
Again, that, again, sir, that's taken, that's taken up through the town's comprehensive plan. They did adopt the most recent amendment back in maybe 2014 or 2016, I believe. And it's a town board initiative that, that gets that going. Typically, they don't defer that to the planning board here because this, this board is so busy processing the number of applications for, for development that's going on.
So it's the, the town of Victor board.
They would initiate that process and if they need outside assistance, they would hire a consultant to help them with that. Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I'd like it more definitive than that, but.
I'm afraid that's probably.
I just, I just don't know who is looking out for the comprehensive plan in the town of Victor.
That's, that's part of the job of this board right here. This board looks at the comprehensive plan and balances development proposals against what's reflected in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right. Well, I hope, I hope that'll take place. I'll address this other comment or this other question to the board. Doug mentioned that he's done everything to make these 10 houses fit in. He's changed setbacks and elevations and planting and all that business. He said everything except reducing the number of, which he said is not feasible. My question to the board is why isn't it feasible to reduce the number of properties on that land?
You need an answer right now?
Sure.
I don't know that the planning board needs to answer the question. We're here to receive public comment on the application. And we, I guess we've heard time and again that the, the public is, is not in favor of the proposed density. That's the message that I've received.
And that, and that's, again, as we talked about, starting a secret process for us to review going forward. So.
Okay. I guess that's all I had. Thank you. By the way, I'd like to compliment you on your conduction of the meetings last. Ever since Ernie hasn't been here. I think you've done a yeoman's job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we certainly wish Ernie a continued recovery from his surgery. So he'll be back. Maybe even by the end of the year. Okay, we do have this resolution to introduce the planning board as lead agency. So if you guys are ready, I can give a fly and move ahead. Okay, whereas honor about August 25th, 2021, the Secretary of Town Victor Planning Board received preliminary subdivision application entitled 1086 Strong Road subdivision, the project proposed at 1086 Strong Road. And whereas it is the intent of A6 Property Holdings LLC, the applicant to develop the project including creation of 10 single-family residential lots on approximately 34.42 acres, including individual onsite septic systems for each lot, extension of the public water main and water benefit area. And whereas the town of Victor board, planning board preliminarily classifies the project as a type one under action under State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the planning board as an involved agency has identified the following additional involved agencies and associated approvals and decisions for which lead agency coordination must be conducted. Victor Town Board, New York State Department of Health and Monroe County Water Authority. Whereas Town of Victor Planning Board intends to proceed with coordinated review as required for type one actions and a lead agency must be established prior to making a determination of significance now therefore be resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board declares its intent to act as lead agency and directs the Planning Board Secretary to mail Part One of the Environmental Assessment Forum, EAF, and a copy of the subdivision plan to all identified involved and interested agencies notifying them that a lead agency must be agreed upon within 30 calendar days of the date of the EAF was mailed to them, expressing the town planning board's intent to act as lead agency. Notification will be sent to the Victor Town Board, Monroe County Water Authority, and the New York State Department of Health. The Ontario County Plan Department will also be notified of the pending application as an interested agency. With that, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll move.
I'll move. Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried four zero. We are declaring ourselves as lead agency, waiting for comment from those respective agencies. So, thank you all for coming. We still have some other applications if you wish to stick around for them or not. Next application, as I said, Valvoline's been removed until the next meeting. Whistlestop Site Plan. Applicant is requesting approval to construct two-story home with 6,000 square feet of livable space and a sports court on 18.2 acre parcel. Previous home that occupied the site has been demolished by the applicant.
Joe, I've got a question kind of off the wall. When I lived on Whistlestop, the, the, the street address was Whistlestop. And I've noticed on the documents, it's referenced Whistlestop and Whistlestop Road. Do we have any insights about what the, the difference between postal and legal? Or is, if there are difference or is it an error? Anybody know?
Personally, I don't.
What's your address, your official?
212 Whistlestop Road, Pittsford, New York, 14534.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I understood it to be on all the documents.
Okay. Yeah, we lived there in, in the 60s and it was just Whistlestop. So I, just off the wall, you know.
No, no. Any questions are fine with me. Nice to see you all again. Hello. It's been a long time coming. So glad to be here.
Welcome. Floor is yours. Give us a quick update and orientation.
We're in process of putting our plans together, submit to the building department in order to obtain a building permit based on this board seeing that the site plan would, would be approved. I mean, we're really in a position where we're behind. I think anybody on the board who doesn't know the history of the property, we had a significant time pass where we had to take and deal with issues associated with the previous owner. But we're in a position where we've been actively moving very quickly to try and get to a point where we could be here with you tonight and then be able to submit some more stuff to Lisa, who's been incredibly helpful and so nice to see you. But honestly, we, we just want to get moving and start construction after obtaining a permit, after obtaining this board's approval of our site plan.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say. I mean, we're building a home to live in.
Understood.
I would be happy to answer any questions that the board has or address any issues. I also have Rob Fitzgerald from Fitzgerald Engineering here, Jeff Marsiniak from Jmar Architecture, who's basically they're the ones who've put together, we've contracted them to put together the plans and everything associated with moving forward. So we're very anxious to hear what you have to say and see if there's anything we need to do to get your approval.
Great. Thank you. I don't know if maybe Wes, do you want to chime in, I guess, and?
Yeah, I can chime in on LaBella's comments and I know they're relatively fresh to you.
Friday.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the questions that we had is, is can, can we kind of expand the view of, of the existing topography to the south, just so we get a better understanding of what's going on with, with drainage in that area? And also, is the, is the sports court existing or is it proposed?
It's proposed and that is something that we'd, we'd like to put in based on the amount of land we have, the ability to.
Okay.
My kids like sports.
Is there, is there going to be any grading associated with that? Because it didn't look like there was, there were any proposed contours with the, the grades there. Or is it just going to? How's that going to look?
I could answer that. Rob Fitzgerald.
Sure.
We do have one contour that does go right through the sports court.
Oh, okay.
I forget the elevation. I did review your comments.
All right.
I did flush through the 10 comments. I was able to address them all. I don't really have any concerns with them. I think adding some additional spot shots in the four corners of that sports court and some probably more labels will help clear that up for you.
Okay.
Of course, we'll work with the town engineer to resolve these 10 issues. I don't want to jump ahead too much, but I know we had one mistake where we had four leach lines. I've since changed that to five leach lines that are 60 foot in length each. I really think that's probably the other big one than just some other house cleaning issues that I feel we could work through. Again, I don't want to rush through them.
Yep, I understand. But could you explain a little bit about the retaining wall, the function of that retaining wall and, and how, and the height of it?
Yep, and I did add, I'm sorry, I did add some spot shots to as pre-request, which I haven't redistributed yet, which I would think will help clarify that. We're looking at the back of the house being a full walkout. So we're trying to extend that look and feel without having a berm in the way. So we're kind of having like a natural extension of the foundation that will kind of transition into a retaining wall. Once the architectural plans are further developed, I think they'll be very clear.
Okay.
That's the portion of the garage.
Okay.
So the garage kind of cuts in because of the way the lot is shaped like this, where the existing house was and has been removed. We're trying to keep that contour and not make a significant change to that. And it lends to the ability to have what would appear to be, when you come up to the house, the first floor of the house is actually the second floor of the house. And the basement of the house is actually the primary living space. So the garage is on the same level as the basement, if you will. So it's a little different and the, the thought process was when you go into a house, and this is my, like, design process for it. Normally, when you go into a house, you go into the foyer and you look straight ahead and you're usually looking at staircases going up.
You should probably speak right up to the microphone before Lisa's never going to get this.
This house is, is designed in a way where because of how it's taking advantage of the land, you would come in and instead of looking up, you're looking down because that opens up to the, the whole basement area. I, I don't know if it helps with, with the questions that you're asking, but that was kind of part of the whole design. It's trying to take advantage of the land.
Yeah. So I don't, in, in summary, I don't believe that any of the LaBella comments would hold up the planning board from proceeding if, if that's how you choose to go.
So you have enough information to, I guess, satisfy the, the engineering and the site development and?
Yeah, and anything that's, that's not resolved tonight, we, that can be resolved as a condition of approval.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks, Wes. Anything else? Are you, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Joe, any comments, questions?
Yes, several. I'm thrilled from the day you came in and talked about demolishing because we spent 15 years on Whistlestop. So it's nice to see that ice arc on and something nice come back in place.
Really appreciate those comments.
You just blew me away because we've been family friends with the Gillens for, for years. And the design you just talked about, looking down, the original Gillen House on Fisher's Road does the exact same thing when you walk inside.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're kind of part of the history of the property. So I'm thrilled with what you're doing here.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And remember your comments from before, it was 12 40-yard dumpsters, nine of which were just things that had nothing to do with taking things out of the other house. And then 100-yard dumpsters attached to tractor trailers to try and get everything out of there. But we did get a lot of use out of the house. Just, I, I don't want to take a lot of the board's time and appreciate the fire department, Fisher's Fire Department was able to run a series of trainings on the house. We were able to get a lot of the wood out of the house and reclaim it. You know, 1984, two by tens, can't really get those anywhere.
So, yeah, well done.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a rousing endorsement, Joe.
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
In regards to Wes's comments and the, the sports court. I think there's significant vegetation east of the sports court based on an aerial that I saw. And I just wondered if you could show that on the drawing. I think that helps.
Are you indicating the pine trees that go between the two, the two lots?
Yeah, I, I think if that's what I saw on the aerial, I think that would be helpful to show on.
The entire, the entire eastern line of the property is all multiple lines of pine trees.
Right. And what I'm saying is I think that would be really helpful to show that on this drawing that I'm looking at so that we, the board and others who may look at this drawing thereafter will understand that there was a natural vegetative buffer between the.
I understand what you're saying. That makes a lot of sense.
And the neighbor. The other question or comment that I have is with respect to septic systems and perk tests and that sort of thing. Are the perk tests, Wes, supposed to be witnessed by a town representative?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Cause I didn't see that on the plans.
They, they were. The, the plan submission date, in order to make it in time for this meeting, we, we did that. And then the perk test took place, I think, a week or two weeks after that. You're right, this fly is like everywhere. I mean, it's everywhere.
I, I may have to re-tell him.
But they, they were witnessed by LaBella and Rob was there and will be happy to provide and add that to the site plan if need be.
If you would just add that to, to the data that's there, then I think that helps formalize that.
No, no problem. And I appreciate the questions about showing the, the pine trees because I reviewed the, the lighting regulation, 131, 9A and those sections. And just if anybody had a comment about that, all that is going to be down facing LEDs. It's not anything remotely close to stadium lighting or anything. Just down facing LEDs, no higher than 15 feet.
Right. And I think if we show that vegetation on here in addition to the other.
That helps a lot, right?
It helps, you know, historically, as this becomes a matter of record for the town, if this property is looked at again for whatever reason in the future, questions are asked about the decisions being made with respect to, say, the sports court. And we can all say that there was a substantial amount of vegetation between the sports court and the neighbor to the east.
Well, my company does, the company that I own here in Victor is, while we do work in security work and lighting is one of the things that becomes very important for cameras and things like that. So we're able to provide all the, all the light readings, all the things that you require to make sure that nothing exceeds certain levels and it doesn't spill over into other properties.
Right. And you know, this is a sensitive neighborhood.
I, I have experienced that this is a sensitive neighborhood.
Yes, it is.
Yes. But I appreciate your comments and they, they sound like they'll be very helpful to our entire project.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Scott. Al?
Nothing else.
Nothing? Hang, hang on a second. Yeah, I, I'll echo the comments and I, I really don't have anything to add. So I think it's great what you're doing and so I did want to, it is a public hearing and if you have a neighbor or a other public would like to comment, step right up, identify yourself, name and address.
Hi.
I do have a quick comment. Jean Crim did send in a late email saying that she.
Hang on a second, folks, before I.
Jean Crim has sent in a late email just saying that she reviewed the plans and she was in favor. She's a neighbor.
Okay.
She's a direct neighbor, right, right to the west.
I was not able to put it in your packets. It was a late email.
Okay.
I live in the Fisher's Fire District. Jean is running as a fire commissioner in the upcoming election. So I would urge you all to get out and vote if you're in Fisher's, the fire district there. Vote for Jean.
Vote for Jean. Mark Taman at 205 Whistlestop, the end of the street there. I just had a quick question. I'm glad the engineers are here about the pond. If I, memory serves, two owners ago built that pond. And I think the reason it was built is there is a spring somewhere around there that perks up and water goes down the hill. And at the end of the hill, across the cul-de-sac from me, they've had to do some extensive engineering and fortification of a, the side of that lot with a lot of rock and everything. And there's been all sorts of drainage done. And if I'm not mistaken, that pond unless, that pond has a pipe underneath it that goes under the road into the canyon across the road for overflow. And, and that spring keeps feeding that pond up and up. But if you walk on the road, you can hear it draining down into the canyon. Has that, what are the plans for that pond? Are you going to do anything with it or fill it in or anything like that? Cause that might affect what happens. Cause that might affect what happens to the water as it goes down the hill.
No, it's a great question. Okay. So, um, the pond, there is a pipe.
Yeah.
And when we bought the property, that pond was to the level where it was spilling into the pipe. The pond actually, this is the pointer?
Yes.
The pond actually here, the pipe goes from here across the driveway into this area of the property over here. So, the pipe comes out past here into where it's all cattails now. It used to be all, it used to be all very manicured, and that's all been overgrown now and, and that kind of thing. So, that pipe actually leaves, goes under the driveway, and then goes to the section of the property, which is to the northwest of the driveway. Um, that being said, when the fire department was, in order to try and answer your question properly, when the fire department was doing their training, they, they pumped a lot of the water from the pond out, and I would urge you, since you're a neighbor, take a walk up. You're more than welcome. Um, give me a call, I'll give you your number. But the pond has not had the level of the water go back up as a result of all the rains or anything like that. We actually thought that the pond was going to be something that continued to have water, continued to run off to the other section. But because the fire department used it, they pumped a lot of water, and we did want to see, um, I, I know the board knows the history of the property and the folks who were there before. We did want to see if there was anything in the pond. There might be some. Right, so, we, we've found some very interesting things on the property, and, um, one of the things we wanted to know was, was anything hiding under the water. We haven't found anything. There's fish in there. It's nice. But that pond level hasn't changed since they pumped it. By a spring? I don't think it is, and I'm, I, I, they have not, I know Rob has not looked at it or anything. Sure?
Mike Sundberg, I'm
Hi, Mike.
I'm the resident who is on the north
Nice to see you again.
On the south side.
Step, step up and say your name and address again, please.
Um, Mike, Mike Sundberg, two hundred Fisher Road.
Thank you.
Uh, so, I, I'm above the property on the south. Um, I can give you some background about the pond. When we moved in, um, John Gillen was still the, the owner of that property. Um, and that was the swale where that pond is, and it's a collection area. Um, there are no springs per se, but there are what I would call weeps from, from the hill that is on the other side of Fisher Road that, that do in the spring especially create wet areas. Most of the water, however, that accumulates in the pond now, but used, whoops, used to go to the, the, um, swale, is runoff water that just comes down the hill. A lot of it comes off of Fisher Road and down my driveway. Uh, but, uh, and, and actually, when, when, um, Mr. Galasano put in the pond, he raised the, the ground level a little bit, so now some of the water actually diverts around the pond and, and is moved to swale. So, it's my impression that, 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 that pipe was there before. It drained the swale that was on the south side of the driveway into the swale that's still on the north side of the driveway. And I don't know where the water from that swale goes, but it probably goes into that collection basin and then on down the hill.
It, um, the reason I'm, I was concerned is honest property.
Right.
They put all those rocks in because it was falling into the canyon there because of all the runoff.
Right, and I, but I believe it's runoff. I don't think it's a spring.
It's not a spring.
Right, and I don't think the pond had any effect on it at all, other than it, it creates a, a holding area for, for runoff. But it's been very dry this summer, and that's one of the reasons why the pond hasn't refilled this.
I was gonna ask if there's, I mean, it's been kind of a drought in the whole
Right, right. Normally, normally it would have refilled, uh, until August, and then in August it starts to fall a little. This year it never refilled because it, we just didn't get much rain.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Floor's still open.
We spoke on the phone, Bill Brackman.
I go.
Right across the street from you, two oh seven Whistle Stop.
I say your name again, you gotta be right up to the microphone to do that.
Bill Brackman, two oh seven Whistle Stop, right across the street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to welcome him to the neighborhood. Big change, very nice, and I'm very happy about it. Question about the cattail area? What are you gonna do with that? I'm just curious.
That's a really good question.
Gonna leave it?
Absolutely no idea.
Cause it's not, it's not beautiful, but it's, it's natural, but I don't know what, you know, what to do with it.
What would your preference be?
I don't have one. I don't know what to do with it. You know, I don't think just grass would look good or anything like that. I, um,
Well, it's wet, or cattails won't be there, so take that in consideration.
So, this is kind of a off-the-record conversation, the way you guys
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We can have this elsewhere, I suppose.
That would be great.
Anyway, that was my big question, was about the cattail area and the sport court. What kind of a sport court is it? Are we talking basketball? Are we talking tennis?
Pavement? Is it asphalt? You're gonna do a lot of things?
Intention is to have a
Come on up.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize. The intention is, is to have a concrete foundation and be able to play basketball, pickle, tennis, that kind of thing. Um, my kids are lacrosse players, so we'll have a lacrosse goal, try and keep the grass nice, try and keep everything looking nice. Nothing large with big fences around it. There's no need for anything like that. Um, it'll just be, uh, basketball and
Except to protect from a ninety mile an hour lacrosse ball.
Well, the good thing is, is we have very deep setbacks because of how large that lot actually is. So, if anyone can take the ball and throw it from there at ninety to get to Fisher's Road, uh, that'll be, that'll be something.
Yeah, it'd be a good trick.
But I, I hope that answers the question. Answer to the cattails. I have absolutely no idea. Um, the, the, we've got a lot to do, um, in order to move forward and get things going, so, um, I'd be happy to, give me a call, and I'd be happy to sit down and have a cup of coffee.
Have a glass of wine and think it through, and, uh, okay, that's wonderful. That's all I really have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You too.
Care to comment before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moves to close the public hearing? Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or nothing? Uh, unless there's any other questions, comments from the board? Um, we do have a resolution prepared for this. So, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact on application twenty-nine SP twenty-two, two, two twelve Whistle Stop Road. Uh, there are eight, uh, whereas, uh, statements. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Melcon Bebe, Bebeian?
Vavigian.
Vavigian, thank you, sorry. Uh, site plan entitled two twelve Whistle Stop Road, site plan drawn by Fitzgerald Engineering, dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, received by the planning board October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Planning board application, twenty-nine SP twenty-two, be approved with the following conditions. Uh, first one is standard, second one that, uh, ongoing, I'm sorry, addressed prior to chairman's signature, that the comments in the letter dated November eighth, twenty twenty-two from Labella Associates be addressed. Number three, comments from the town's code enforcement officer dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, be addressed. And ongoing conditions, uh, they're both standard, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. Al moves?
Second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Thank you very much. Our family appreciates your consideration and everything you do. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
I'll be sending you an email.
Okay.
Crown Castle has been removed. Next one is Go Car Wash sign. Uh, owner Royal Car Wash Victor LLC applicant is requesting approval to remove existing Royal Car Wash signage and replace with three new same-sized signs for Go Car Wash. Uh, the lollipop freestanding sign is proposed to have a new sign face and the pole and, uh, sign cabinet to be repainted. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, Jeremy Miller from Skylight Signs, representing, uh, Go Car Wash.
Hang on a second. Hey, folks, could you take your conversation out of the room, please? Thanks. Just wanted to give you a chance to speak.
No problem, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so like you said, we are just, uh, basically, um, attempting to take down the existing signage from Royal Car Wash, rebranding it to Go Car Wash, which was sold to them. Um, same exact size, uh, signage on the buildings, same number of, of signs, as well as the same, the faces, uh, on the lollipop sign, we're just changing out and painting the pole.
Nothing any bigger than this?
Correct. Everything's within code and stay in the same size.
So, you had originally proposed, um, a signs with an orange background, and I believe town's planning department had related that, I think the preference was to try to stick with the same background that's already there. So, is that your intent is to?
Whatever the board deems is necessary, um, we prefer the orange, but if it's, uh, you know, a case of not getting the permit, we'll, we'll go with the white in this case, cause they want to move forward, obviously, so.
I will open it up to the board. Um, Al?
Uh, that was gonna be my one only comment, was the orange background didn't seem to go with the property and the building.
Yeah, we, we did spend a lot of time on the architecture comments and review of that, and to get a sign that just doesn't blend with the rest of it, I, I think that's what you're gonna hear.
We're just trying to keep with what we're doing across the board for all, all the other locations in the, in the area as well, so.
What's the current color?
It's actually white, I think.
White and blue?
White, white with blue, white background, blue lettering.
I thought it was yellow, but, yeah, I could be wrong. Maybe that's the free car wash part is yellow or something, I don't know. So, yes, blue and white, so.
I think consistency would be good.
Yeah.
I do too.
So, what you're seeing up there on the screen is what they're
Right.
Is the second one, the, the, the first one that they proposed was white lettering, bright orange, or that same orange probably is background, so. This is
Up in the right direction.
I, yeah. Joe, any comments other than that?
No, that's
That?
No, so, so does that mean that, um, the sign company is willing to go with the colors that existed originally and keep it at that? Is that what we want to see?
I think we're looking at keeping
An orange and black kind of configuration?
Yeah, instead of the, uh, instead of the yellow and white, it's orange and white.
Oh, okay.
With black painted signpost borders, posts, and, um, what do you call framing, I guess?
Okay, so no, so not an orange background with the white border?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
That coloring is what you're, what I think is
Okay.
More in line with what's already out there.
Understood, yep.
Al, what do you think?
Agreed.
Okay, so.
Al says it's okay.
I check all my color schemes with my wife. She's the color coordinator.
Safer that way.
It is a, it is an overlay district that, that does require some serious, uh, conformist to an architectural standard that we're trying to maintain, so it's not an arbitrary thing. It's something that we
I understood. Yeah, Lisa pointed out it's the gateway to Victor, as she pointed out to me.
Just look at the four corners right in front of that building and the historic structure that's on your site. So, um, with that, I don't know if the public has any questions, comments? Seeing none, I believe this is a public hearing, so we'll entertain a motion to close
I move.
Hearing, Al moves.
Second.
Scott seconds, very quickly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried for zero. I do have a resolution for approval.
Just to be clear, this is the plan?
Yes.
It. You're going, okay.
And what's up on the screen?
Okay.
Are we going with the black letters and the orange circle? Is that what we're going with?
As depicted.
On the
The lollipop.
Lollipop sign.
On the lollipop.
And the building sign that they're requesting is
Building sign is gonna be orange letters.
Letters, yeah. Unless you had an objection.
No, I, I'm, I don't think this is my expertise area, so I'll stay out of this one.
Okay, then. So, yes, Lisa, those are the two.
Making clear.
Yeah, and obviously you'll pass that along to code?
Yes.
For their, uh, review when it comes in. Um, so, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact for application, uh, thirty-one SP twenty-two from Go Car Wash sign at six oh seven, six oh nine Rowley Road. Um, there are seven wherances, um, including number seven, the town's architectural consultant reviewed the site plan, renderings and details, and provided comments and letters dated October thirty-first and November seventh, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on November ninth, twenty twenty-two, and identified no significant adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved that the project Go Car Wash signage will not result in a significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the site plan application of Skylight Signs entitled Go Car Wash signage dated October fourth, twenty twenty-two, received by the planning board October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, last revised November sec, seventh, twenty twenty-two. Is that the date on those, Lisa? Want to make sure we get the right revision?
Yes, November seventh.
Yeah, okay, perfect. With the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Um, one is standard, two, comments from the code enforcement officer dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two, be addressed. Number three, that November seventh, twenty twenty-two, design plans for the building mounted signs containing a white background, orange lettering and black outline be submitted for signature, being submitted, uh, for signature shall be consistent with planning board preferences expressed during the November ninth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting this evening, and that a building permit be obtained for the signs prior to installation. Ongoing conditions, uh, that in the event, uh, new or modified lighting is desired, and that's one thing I didn't ask you. These are all still the gooseneck lightings on the building itself, correct?
Yeah, that's gonna stay the same, yep.
These, the lollipop sign that's internally lit?
Correct.
As it is right now, correct?
As it is right now, yep.
Okay. Um, thanks for making sure
No problem.
Hear that. Uh, new or modified lighting desired, that in the event new or modified lighting is desired on the project site or in relation to the signage, said lighting shall comply with chapter one thirty-one of the town of, uh, Victor Town Code, and lighting plans and details shall be submitted to the town for review. Lighting modifications may be subjected to further review by the planning board. This approval does not authorize installation of any window mounted graphics. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So, with that resolution, I hear a motion.
I'll move.
Joe moves, Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried for zero.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Last application this evening, tenant GeoTherm applicant is requesting approval to install a geothermal heat pump on the parcel. Come on up.
How you doing?
I assume it's you, cause you smiled at me and said, yep, that's the one.
My name's Jesse Carson. I'm the project manager for GeoTherm. Um, I just got this email, in fact, last, uh, it was last night, and it's got some, uh, specifics that, uh, from Labella Associates here, and there's just no way that I'm prepared to answer all these questions right now, but I did want to show up and not put off the meeting because, you know, we're trying to get the project going as soon as possible.
No, that's fine. It's a good, good opportunity to get some dialogue going and, and for, uh, for us to hear, you know, Wes's comments and
Yeah.
And how you'd like to, you know, go forward and respond to them, so.
Okay.
And give the board an opportunity to look at your application with you anyway, so.
Sure.
It's fine. Just keeps the process moving.
Yep.
For you especially. So, um, I know Wes, did you want to start off?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up Google Earth. Um, I wanted to bring up the property. It would, I think that would be very helpful.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Cause we'll be in the same room. We can look at the same graphic. Um, and as you can see, the site plan that's up on the screen, it doesn't, it, it doesn't do the site justice in terms of what the existing topography is and what type of vegetation is, is present possibly in the vicinity of those geothermal lines, so.
So, with that plan, Wes, I just wanted to have you, um, clarify. It looks like you gotta dig eight-foot deep trenches for these lines, correct? And are they, we're not talking about an eight-foot wide trench, are we?
No, no. So, the trench itself is about four feet wide, and it goes down eight feet deep.
Wow.
Yeah, exactly. It steps back on the sides, but the, the eight-foot depth is about four foot wide when you get down that deep.
Just trying to get a sense for the magnitude of this excavation
Sure.
in the area that Wes is probably trying to bring up on Google Earth Street View right now.
Yeah, I got it pulled up too.
You have eight feet between trenches on your plan, and if it's four feet wide, that means you got technically a four-foot piece in between each one of them?
Yes.
I'm assuming. Oh, no, actually, zero.
No, so what you have is, you have, you have your four-foot wide trench, that's the, the width of the excavator's bucket. And then on the, I think it's on our site view here that we submitted, that's where we say we want to have at least eight feet from edge to edge. So, if you're talking about like a four-foot trench, eight feet in between, and then another four-foot trench, so about, you know, I say twenty feet. When, what, two trenches is about twenty feet wide is the area of, um, that's disturbed.
What's going in the hole? Is it a straight pipe? Is it coils? I'm not sure what
So, what it is is